This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, November 9th. Please stand for our invocation led by District One Councilman Cory Penn and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you right now, God, for this meeting. We thank you for the council, the administration, and every citizen, constituent that's here. We just thank you for blessings over the city of Mobile and over this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's a pretty day in Mobile, Alabama. Welcome to our city council meeting. At this time, I ask if anyone has a cell phone or any electronic device, I ask at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of September 28th, October 26th, November 1st, and November 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Motion passed.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Appreciate you coming. I just have a couple of announcements this morning. The first two have to do with litter cleanups that are scheduled for this Saturday. The Mobile Area, excuse me, the Mobile Area Association of Realtors are going to assign a team of individuals to various locations through each of the city council districts from 9:00 AM till noon on Saturday. To sign up, you can go to, you would email meg, M-E-G, at G C L, just don't know, meg, M-E-G, at G C M L S dot com to sign up to participate in the Mobile Area Association of Realtors litter cleanup. The second one is Mobile Bay Keeper and the Downtown Alliance are partnering to host a cleanup in support of the NOAA Marine Debris Prevention Project. You can go to 96 Marion Street Saturday, and it is from 9:00 AM to 11:00. I want to relate a story to you. Many of you may have seen it, either on social media or just broadcast media, having to do with the outstanding work of some of our animal services personnel. Came out last week that three of our animal control officers were responding to a phone call about a dog, what someone thought was a dog down in a storm drain barking. And so, two of the animal control officers had searched an area, looking down in the drains, calling for the dog. And finally, the very last drain they were going to, they looked down in the drain and they see the dog's nose and his eyes. And with that, the dog went into, further back into the drain and disappeared. They actually, at that point, called back at the office, spoke to Audrey Hill, who's been an animal control officer for a couple of years now. And she recognized that this must be the dog that had been on social media as being lost, and also, I guess that app is PawBoost. So anyway, long story short, they went back to where they'd seen the dog last. They called the owners of the dog. The dog had been gone three weeks. Okay, and we don't know if it'd been in the storm drain for three weeks. But anyway, when the owners showed up, they started calling the dog. The dog came back to the drain, and they were able to rescue it. Now, two of the individuals, one of them had only, two of the, of the two animal control officers that made the first engagement, one of them had only been at work as a new employee for a week. The other one had only been an employee for less than six months. I'd say that's a pretty good way to start off your career as an animal control officer. Anyway, a lot of networking there to return a lost dog to a very concerned set of owners. So congratulations to Audrey Hill, Mark Hoyt, and David Louder. We really appreciate that. Great story. I think there've been over about 45,000 or so views on social media regarding that, which is a positive news story. This time, I'd like to read a proclamation for Alzheimer's, and I think we have some attendees here that are representing the Alzheimer's Association. That would be Katie Fellis. Okay, if you could come to the podium, please, Katie. Cheryl Elkins, and Evelyn DeAngelo. So, two of you are here. And so, Katie, when I finish...
Katie is actually currently attending her mother's funeral.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
At this very moment, they lost her, with dementia, and Alzheimer's was happening.
Oh, well, this proclamation is certainly timely. Would one of you like to make remarks after I give the proclamation? You're certainly welcome to address the council. The proclamation reads, "Whereas more than 6 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, a progressive disease that destroys the memory and other important mental functions of the brain, and whereas almost 2/3 of Americans with Alzheimer's disease are women, and 1 in 3 seniors die due to the effects and complications of this disease, research showing that Alzheimer alone has killed more individuals than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Whereas although no current cure has been developed for this disease, dedicated research, medications, and effective management strategies are proven to help improve various symptoms. And whereas supportive advocacies and dedicated associations such as the local chapter of the Alzheimer's Associations are recognized for the raised awareness and efforts to prevent such as the Mobile Bay Alzheimer's Walk to help fight against the Alzheimer's disease, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby formally proclaim November 14th as Alzheimer's Awareness Day."
Thank you.
The Mobile Area Alzheimer's Walk will be held this Sunday on the campus of Spring Hill University, and we are so pleased to be one of the top fundraising chapters in the country and in the state of Alabama. The Alabama Association actually has been able to raise more funds towards research and caregiver support than any of the other chapters in the past years, despite challenges that may have been affected with COVID. Ms. Cheryl?
The state of Alabama has the highest death rate. Currently, right now, there are 96,000 people in the state, in just the state of Alabama, that have been diagnosed with this disease. That is not including early onset and other forms of dementia. So this walk is very important to our state.
And we appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's conclude your announcement, Mr. Mayor.
That's it.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes. Apologize to our employees of the month, but Jim Delap will make those presentations.
Good morning.
Morning.
Rise this morning to recognize three employees within the Public Works Directorate. We have in the three different departments. The first one we'll recognize is Ronald Mavens, who is in our Public Services Department. And I'll have Jeff Dees come down and speak about Ronald.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is, this is Mr. Mavens right here. He is an Equipment Operator 3 at this present time in the Trash Department. Mr. Mavens has been with us 23 years. He started off as an unskilled laborer. He moved up four, four, four levels in a little over four years. He's worked in several departments. He's worked in trash, which is it right now. He's also been, worked in sanitation department. He also assists in urban forestry, emergency tree removals, and then street department as needed. He's highly respected between our supervisors and his coworkers. He advocates for his employees on the Public Service Committee meeting, on the Public Service Committee. He also volunteers at city events when needed for Mardi Gras, any of the ball games, and the other Trinity Garden parades and other parades. He also volunteers in his community. He volunteers with the Boys and Girls Club. He assists with the, with the youth on-the-job-ready program, teaching the boys how to clean wax floors and assist in teaching them the job skills while they're young. He also, in the past, has coached youth football. He's a good, he's a youth mentor, too. And this is Mr. Mavens. He's Employee of the Month.
Just want to thank you all. I had a lot to say before when I got here, but when I got here, everything went away. So just want to thank everybody. I enjoyed this time I've been in the city. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
as a awareness for the new council members within the Public Works Directorate, the six main departments. Parks and Rec and Public Services are fairly large departments, so they each have their own. And then the other four departments submit a recommendation for one person within those four departments. This month, we're proud to recognize Ms. Bertha Moore, who's in our Engineering Department. And Nick Amberger's going to speak about her.
Well, what an honor it is for me to introduce you to Bertha. Tell you a little bit about Bertha. She, first and foremost, she's grounded in her faith, and she brings that to the office every day, which really, really, truly helps us. She's a Sunday school teacher. She is probably the most pleasant, positive individual you will ever encounter, you can imagine, in a engineering environment with engineers and contractors. We need that sometimes. So she brings out the best in us, brings out the best in everybody that she engages with. A little bit about her background, she served 12 years in the Navy. She's been with the city for 10 years, been with the Engineering Department for the last two, was previously with the motor pool. And what she does for the city, if you walked here, drove a car here, or drove over a drainage pipe, you need to thank Bertha. She's our fiscal officer, so she pays the bills. She probably spends more money, I'm sorry about that, Mayor, but she spends more money in the city than payroll. Just last, just this past year, she's processed over 18 and 1/2 million dollars worth of bills, primarily CIP-related stuff. So 380 payments to contractors and vendors, so, I mean, she is a key component in our CIP process. She's generous beyond belief. I mean, you know, she's been with the city for 10 years, so she's got a lot of institutional knowledge that she shares with other people, other departments that they've come in, as they come in here. meticulous with details. We've had two successful audits of all of our financial records, which have just been, you know, without any issues. No surprises, not surprising that she was selected by her peers. I mean, it's not the department heads that select her, it's her peers. And so, it's just with great, great pleasure that I say congratulations, Bertha. Well-earned.
Good morning.
Morning.
As a Christian, I first give honor and praise to God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. It is only by God's providence that each of us are here today. I thank God for my husband, retired Staff Sergeant Anthony D. Moore, who is present with me this morning as a witness of this recognition. I thank God for his providence for allowing those he placed in my life when being hired by the city of Mobile. It was by God's providence that I was promoted from an OE1 to OE2, from an OE2 to OE3, and currently as a fiscal officer, all done within 10 years. It is only by God's providence that led each person who promoted me to see God's light and not my own. In the Book of Colossians, 3rd chapter, 23rd verse, the scripture says, "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working for the Lord, and this is what I live by." I thank God for everyone I have met during this season of my life, who graciously shared their knowledge and expertise. You know who you are because some of you are here this morning in this very room. I thank God for placing in the hearts of Ms. Shonda Smith, Mr. James Delap, Mayor Sandy Stimson, and the city council, a platform that honors the employee under Public Works, recognizing us for our efforts as an Employee of the Month. When serving in the U.S. Navy, such recognition helped us in being promoted in ranks. My prayer is that it spreads throughout the various departments of Mobile City's government. I thank God for those in leadership positions who believed in me, like Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Janik Terry, Ms. Diane McCarthy, Ms. Natalie Kent, Ms. Lori Williams, and Ms. Sherri Boucher. I thank God for the transparency and dignity of those who serve on the Employee of the Month various Public Works Committee. The beauty of this platform is that our peers justice and select us by their observation of our work ethics, our job performance, and our customer service skills. And the executive committee provides the final confirmation. Thanks to you, my peers in Engineering Department, and the various committee members of Public Work at Large. My prayer is that our Father God continues through His Holy Spirit to guide each of us in our daily walk, and for each of us to remember that we can do nothing without God. Thank each and every one of you, and may God bless you.
Ms. Amberger, one thing you forgot, that she's always smiling. The person that you see, I mean, right now, is always her. Pleasant attitude, and everything that she stated. One thing I can vouch for, that she walk her talk. Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to commend Ms. Moore for keeping a smile. Everyone's talked about how, how you keep a smile on your face, even though you're down there amongst all those engineers. I know that's a daily challenge, because the Blessed Virgin Mary would lose her patience on that floor.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you, Ms. Bertha, for coming down. Congratulations. I just feel your presence, and so I know you're amazing Sunday school teacher. I need to come visit. Also, I want to give a big shout out to Ronald Mavens. He a part of the Boys and Girls Club, so shout out to everything that you're doing with young people. And also, I'm wearing my purple. So thank you all so much for everything that you're doing in the community. God bless you.
Thank you, Senator.
And our third employee that we're here to recognize is our Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, and we'll let Ms. Shonda Smith talk about Mr. Darrell Smith.
Good morning.
Morning.
I usually have a spiel, but Ms. Bertha said it so well, I'm not going to repeat it. She spoke the process, and that's what it is, and we fight to keep that process. They are elected by their peers. I am here to talk about Mr. Darrell Smith. Mr. Darrell Smith is our custodian, too, but that title does not exemplify all of the things that he does for us and with us. This is a man that if we call, he comes. To the point that, excuse me, when we mentioned his name, when we're like, oh, we need, we did shelters this year, it was our first time doing shelters, and we're like, who can we call at this time of night to come and cover a shelter? And everyone said Darrell, and I was like, who else? Because we always call him for everything. But who we called was Darrell Smith, and he showed up. And he's there. He is a person who lives by his word. He's been with us for 10 years. He wants to get the project done. He's always, how do I help? How do I get it done? And it makes a difference in who we are. He also got the, we do the champion belt, which is a, like a wrestling belt that we do. We do those every quarter to represent, and we did that as well. But he doesn't, a lot of times, I think he, think what he does goes unseen, but we see it, and we talk about him every day. So I am proud to announce Mr. Darrell Smith. I told him if he cried, we're going to fight, because then I'm going to cry. Mr. Darrell Smith as Employee of the Month for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate those encouraging words. She was drinking with me earlier upstairs about me getting emotional, but her getting up here speaking like she is, that kind of gets you emotional. So I really thank you for this award this morning. When I got the other award, they didn't tell me I was getting the award. Usually, when I come down here to the Plaza, I'm usually coming to pick up something. So they really got me then, and so that's why I got so emotional about the award. So I have to thank God, and thank Ms. Smith, and thank the rest of my staff, Mr. Shad Collins, and Ms. Penn, and I just thank God for this award. Thank you.
Congratulations.
One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning again. I have a proclamation, and there are some students who are here with us this morning. If you all, why don't you all come on down to the podium? All right, the proclamation reads, "Whereas nearly half a million people die each year from the use of or exposure to tobacco products, and whereas the U.S. Food and Drug Administration and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reported that more than 2 million U.S. middle and high school students currently use e-cigarettes, with more than 8 in 10 of those youth using flavored e-cigarettes. And whereas students working against tobacco, SWAT, who these youngsters represent, is a group of students within the Mobile County Public Health, Public School System, who have been recruited by a school sponsor to serve as peer tobacco educators. And whereas SWAT's mission is to educate elementary and middle school youth with a focus on students in grades 4th through 8th, and to reduce youth exposure to tobacco products and secondhand smoke. And whereas SWAT students are trained to address the issues of peer helping, tobacco-related health issues, anti-tobacco advocacy issues, the dangers of vaping, and tobacco industry advertising tactics." Now therefore, I, Gina Gregory, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 as National Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Mobile, and of course, we urge all our citizens to join us in celebrating this momentous occasion. And here is the official proclamation. I'll show you all. Would anybody like to make some remarks? Anybody introduce everybody who's here?
To the Mayor Stimson, the entire city council, on behalf of the Mobile County Health Department Prevention and Wellness Program, which is where SWAT comes under. Like you said, it stands for students working against tobacco, and each one of these students have a reason why they are driven to do what they do as peer educators, help change in the course of what's taking place with the use of these products in our community. So I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Azariah Hudson. I attend Mary G. Montgomery. I'm in the 11th grade.
My name is Andre Jones. I attend Mary G. Montgomery. I'm a junior at Mary G.
My name is Amber Patrick. I also attend Mary G., and I'm a junior.
My name is Casey Rogers. I go to Alma Bryant, and I'm in 12th grade.
My name is Blake Newhorn, and I'm a senior at Bryant High School.
My name is Michael Lee. I'm a 12th grader at Alma Bryant High School. First off, I would like to thank Mobile, Mobile, sorry, Mobile City County, oh my God, I cannot speak right now, I'm sorry, Mobile City Council for allowing us to be here today, and would like to say that we are honored to be a part of an organization like SWAT, which helps us educate elementary and middle school students on the dangers of tobacco. Sorry. When you consider that nearly half a million people die each year from tobacco use, and understand that nearly 20% of high school students use e-cigarettes, it's clear that we all have a lot of work to do. On behalf of all the members of the SWAT program, we are deeply appreciative of the support shown by our program from the Mobile City Council. Thank you all.
Can I get your name one more time?
Michael Lee.
Michael Lee? Well, Michael Lee, we are so happy and honored that you all came down, that we want to take a picture with you all. If you all can just come around here in front of the dais, and we're going to take a picture with you all.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one comment. It's not lost on me that standing in front of us are leaders in this city, but it's more than just being leaders, it's leaders amongst your peers with a topic that is extremely important. So thank you all for standing up, standing firm, and taking the lead in this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of noise ordinance on November 20th on South Water Street and November 14th in Melavanna Park.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Motion passed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1051 South Washington Avenue and 954 Marine Street, public nuisances, and ordering them demolished.
One second. Yeah, this is open up our public hearing. If anyone...
Um, my name is Azariah Hudson. I attend Mary G. Montgomery. I'm in the 11th grade.
My name is, my name is Andre Jones. I attend Mary G. Montgomery. I'm a junior at Mary G.
Uh, my name is Amber Patrick. I also attend Mary G., and I'm a junior.
Uh, my name is Casey Rogers. I go to Alma Bryant, and I'm in 12th grade.
My name is Blake Newhorn, and I'm a senior at Bryant High School.
My name is Michael Lee. I'm a 12th grader at Alma Bryant High School. First off, I would like to thank Mobile, Mobile Senate, sorry, Mobile City County, oh my God, I cannot speak right now, I'm sorry. Mobile City Council for allowing us to be here today, and would like to say that we are honored to be a part of an organization like SWAT, which helps us educate elementary and middle school students in, on the dangers of tobacco. Sorry. When you consider that nearly half a million people die each year from tobacco use, and understand that nearly 20% of high school students use e-cigarettes, it's clear that we all have a lot of work to do. On behalf of all the members of the SWAT program, we are deeply appreciative of the support shown by our program from the Mobile City Council. Thank y'all.
Can I get your name one more time?
Michael Lee.
Michael Lee? Well, Michael Lee, we are so happy and honored that you all came down, that we wanna take a picture with you all. If you all can just come around here in front of the dais, and, um, we're gonna take a picture with you all.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one comment. Uh, uh, it's not lost on me that standing in front of us are leaders in this city, but it's more than just being leaders. It's leaders amongst your peers, uh, with a topic that is extremely important. So thank y'all for standing up, standing firm, and taking the lead in, in this. Thank you.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of noise ordinance on November 20th on South Water Street and November 14th in Melavanna Park.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Most passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1051 South Washington Avenue and 954 Marine Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Ooh, one, one second. Yeah, this is open up our public hearing. If anyone cared to come down and address the council regarding these public hearings, you may do so at this time. And as you come down and speak before the council, please give us your name and address.
Get in the council. I'm Selena Hudson, reside at 954 Marine Street. I'm Selena Hudson. I reside at 954 Marine Street. Uh, I've been talking back and forth with the city regarding my contractor's condition with doing the work on my house. He's having, uh, problems with his wife, needed a kidney transplant, and they've been in Birmingham. He's thus since been back, and both of them have gotten COVID. But the problem was the back part of the house. I guess the, the storm did it in. It was already kinda fragile. Uh, the roof was coming down on it, and I guess that's why the city said that we had to fix it. So between him coming back, we just knocked it down. So we did demolish the back part, which I have pictures of that. We just have to remove the floor. And I think that was the issue on the house.
So you said you already demolished the back of it?
We, we knocked it down, and I have the pictures. We just have to have, we have to, uh, get the floor part removed.
Mr. David. Uh, Ms. Hudson, may I speak to you?
David Dokkenbach, Deputy Director, Municipal Enforcement. Um, at, at this point, we would be happy to step back and let the property owner move forward with the repairs. However, we do need to make sure that you apply for a permit for not only the, the demolition of the rear of the, of the property, but also to repair the rest of the property. And we can table this to allow her to get the time to get that permit through the Build Mobile Department. Right now, there's not a permit issued for the work that's happening, and that's why we're forced to move forward. But yes, we are observing some action on the property, but it is not in a code compliance situation at this point. We just need the permit so you can continue to work.
Yeah, um, as Mr. Dokkenbach stated, just go ahead and get a permit, and I live right across the street from you. My first time meeting you. Um, I know the lights they on at the house. I'm sorry.
You just don't recognize, you know Ms. Community Church Ministries, Ms. Hudson?
Okay. But, uh, yeah, just please keep your property up. We trying to build up the neighborhood and everything. Um, I know you keep the lights on and et cetera, but, um, I'm sure people are interested in buying your property. You know, if you, you know, care to, go ahead and sell it and everything, but we just trying to build up the neighborhood and everything.
We just a contractor, just put a looped in everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but we're just gonna move on, and we have to get somebody else.
Yes, ma'am. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're gonna table it.
Let's table it. Is anyone else present that would like to speak on these properties for this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Shamika McDaniel doing business as We Care Adult Services to operate a sedan service.
Is anyone present to speak on this public hearing about the certificate of public convenience for necessity? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications from the coun, to the council, Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I'm here today to discuss the, uh, importance of tackling juvenile delinquency and gun violence through use of the ARP funding. Uh, before I do so, I would like to make, um, two points very clear. Uh, there is a power source that is greater than any level of manipulation that can take place from anybody in here, and we need to consider that in everything that we do. And as discussed in the pre-meeting before, uh, full transparency will be the key for success and a longevity standpoint of that within our city. Uh, while African-Americans or blacks make up the majority of this city's population, we too often find, uh, where some technicality or another causes our neighborhoods to be, uh, looked over or sometimes even outright ignored. Um, the current advocate for the 6th District even suggested that people positioned, uh, to be stewards of taxpayer resources, uh, should not be responsible for ensuring that citizens are aware, uh, of available funding, and system that organizations seek their own capital. Uh, fortunately, in Mobile, Alabama, we see people in a position of power, um, take things quite personal, uh, instead of taking care of the people's business. Uh, more times than not, agencies meet all the standards and necessary, uh, credentials, but in a decision, uh, excuse me, but if a decision maker, uh, doesn't like the individual overseeing the agency, uh, we witness where the needs of the constituents are ignored to appease ideological justifications of those of, who are considered most affluent. Uh, ARP funding will allow us to offer beneficial resources, uh, to the neediest of Mobileans. Um, Einstein warns us that doing the same thing over and over and over again, uh, expecting different results is the true definition of insanity. Uh, how long will we ignore what's best for our city at the hands of uncertainty and speculation? Uh, this is the time to, uh, truly move Mobile, Alabama forward. Uh, normally, as a city, we find ourselves responding to incidents or playing the guessing game, um, as a means to resolve our matters that affect all neighborhoods, particularly those most underserved. Uh, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. There are agencies never before considered by this city who have data-proven solutions presenting results, and they solve problems that we face as a municipality regarding social services and public safety on a daily basis. Uh, I want to remind you that the governance environment becomes more pleasant when all people have a seat at the table. Uh, this creates better engagement in both the public and private sectors. Uh, today's pre-meeting shed light on a negative potentiality if we avoid a sound and fair process. Uh, we also saw where all applicants were rewarded monies under the specific purview of ARP being discussed this morning. Uh, based on the $2 million set aside for social services, um, and the number of applicants that, uh, applied for this, that could be $50,000 apiece for those groups. So I know the time has aligned, but I hope that those will be considered, and the information will be sent to, uh, the council as well. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Scott.
I can respond.
Mr. John.
Just so it's very clear. District 6 Representative never said that folks in this city should not have access to information with regards to any type of programs that are made available by a federal, state, or city funding. What I said was that it's not the entirety, it, it's not the city entirely that is responsible for an organization to seek that information. As somebody that's worked business development for years, I bear a responsibility to go out and seek those things and be tied in to those networks and channels where that information flows. I think the city does have avenues that it puts that information out. Just last week, I sat in a homeowners meeting. I put out a newsletter Thursday. There were 25 members at a homeowners association, and I asked in that meeting, how many people got my newsletter? Not one person raised their hand. The information's been out there for at least four years. My predecessor has a network there. Yes, we can do better. Yes, we can seek additional ways, but it's also the responsibility of those organizations seeking those funds to look in the places where that would normally be advertised to find those. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you for that.
Ms. Hill, you know the rules. Thank you, though.
I will address.
Yeah, thank you.
Reverend Marvin Lou regarding, um, Resolution 081011.
Good morning, um, Brother President and members of the council, Mr. Mayor, uh, the administration, and all those who make this August body grow. I am Marvin Charles Lou Jr., L.U.E., pastor of the Stewart Memorial CME Church, 1266 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Mobile, Alabama. I have come to stand before you again to remind, encourage, push for the fact that we need an anti-gun violence program, uh, in our city that addresses the faith community victims and former perpetrators. This Thursday at 6:30 PM at Stewart Memorial, we will have our Stop Now Live Now, uh, We Want to Live Community Action, where we will lay out a proposal that we believe will do our city good. We understand, and we're not foolish enough to think that one size will fit all, but we do understand that if each one of us takes our moment, takes our time, and works a plan to address one part of the problem, when we put the entire puzzle together, we all shall win. Again, it's Thursday, 6:30 PM, Stewart Memorial CME Church, Mobile, Alabama, 1266 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, here in our city. Why are we doing this? Because of the fact blood continues to spread, shed in our streets. Why are we doing this? Because of the fact our young people are not having an opportunity to reach their destiny. Why are we doing this? Because of the fact if our city is to be the industry hub for, for, for hospitality and for other forms of commerce, we cannot continue to hide this plague under the rug. We want everyone to know that this is a safe city, but it, we only become a safe city when we work together as a city. One Mobile is not just a slogan. One Mobile is a desire of every citizen of this community. However, if we're going to be that one Mobile, we've got to address issues that are affecting all of Mobile. Again, Thursday, 6:30, uh, Stewart Memorial CME Church, um, 1266 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. I am Marvin Charles Lou Jr., pastor of Stewart Memorial, and the primary community organizer for Faith in Action, Alabama.
Alright. Rev, let me ask you a question. Did you sign up for which resolution was it?
I think it was.
Zero.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was one about cyber. He may have thought that it was gunshot detection, but it's actually not. So, but, uh, we really appreciate you coming down and talking to us about, uh, your program and gunshots and protecting the community, about gunshot protection and everything, and also violence in our community because it is extremely needed. Uh, as we all are aware, we just had another incident, uh, this past weekend, uh, and again, I'm gonna state that it wasn't the fair that shot anybody, it was somebody that was at the fair, just like it wasn't Lad Stadium that shot someone, it was somebody there. Uh, and even though gunshot, the gunshot detection program is gonna be a great asset to our city, we need to do something to get the guns out the street. By the time we hear or see a gun, somebody's normally on the ground. And in most cases, that's not a good thing for people or kids from the ages of 18 to 24. So, uh, thank you for coming down and, and talking to us, and, uh, thank you for, uh, using that line item that may not have been gunshot detection.
Brother President? I'm sorry, if, if, if I may clarify.
I'm sorry, Rev. Um, we have rules. But I'm gonna ask you, uh, Rev, and to please stay in contact with, um, Ms. Anitra Henderson, and also, uh, Chief, uh, Baptiste. I mean, I'm, I will be there Thursday night, that's my plans, and then whatever this council can do to stop the gun violence and any type of violence in our city from domestic violence on, we willing to do. But again, we can't do no more than what this table to my left puts before us and everything. And again, we do appreciate you coming down and speaking on behalf of this issue, which we need to keep up in the light because this is a plague upon our city. But again, you know, only thing we can really work on and vote on is what the administration put before us and everything. And again, please stay in contact with, uh, Baptiste and Ms. Henderson.
I thank you, Brother President.
Yeah, thank you so much, Rev.
Thank you.
Mr. President, one more comment with this.
Yes, Mr. John.
We have members in media here. I would ask and encourage and challenge you to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. They've got an event. I challenge you to be there. I challenge you not only be there, but report on it and be a part of the solution. They're doing what we need. They're connecting people to try and stop violence before it happens, and it takes all of us. I said that the last meeting. This is what I'm talking about. But I need you, and we need you, to help be a part of the solution and report on the positives. Get that out in front of Mobile so we can be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem. Thank you.
Am I out of order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Resolutions held over 21698, authorized contract with Tetra Tech Inc. for disaster debris removal monitoring services.
Move to table.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
If there are no other further objections, I'll take the rest of these together. 08990, approved purchase orders to petroleum traders for fuel for equipment services. 21991, authorized contract with Downing Studio for Bugler Sculpture at Memorial Park. Uh, 21992, authorized contract with Next Gen Utility Management for software products and services in support of public works, work order, and asset management processes.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Most passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, 38038.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03995 through 031018.
Move to, uh, waive the rules in order to consider, uh, Resolutions 03-995 through, and I didn't get that last one.
031018.
That one.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is this, uh, 954 Marine Street? Is that what we talked about earlier?
We gotta take it up, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, we'll take it up.
Okay.
In a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Most passes.
If there are no objections, I'll take all of them with the exception of, uh, 4999, which I'll take separately. 03995, appoint Scott Jones as an ex officio, member of the Mobile Planning Commission. 37996, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Shamika McDaniel doing business as We Care Adult Service to operate a sedan service. 37997, recommend approval to the ABC, but worth of issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Voodoo Wing Company on Dolphin Street. 4998, declare the structure at 1051 South Washington Avenue, a public nuisance and order it demolished. 581001 and 1002 are declaring weeds noxious, authorizing removal of weeds, assessing cost for removal of weeds. Groups 1623, 1620, and 1609. 601003, 1004, 1005, and 1006 are approving and award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month, public services employee of the month, Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, and Public Works at Large Employee of the Month. 031018, appoint Cleveland McFarland Jr. to the golf course advisory committee.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in the discussion. I would like to say, uh, congratulations to, uh, Mr. Scott Jones for being appointed to the Mobile Planning Commission. He's made a statement in pre-conference day he'd been set up, but if I'm my, if I can remember, I think you asked for this, but, uh...
After it was strongly suggested.
So you set your own self up in other discussions.
Uh, yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Whitten, Karen.
Um, in the honor of today, again, is another one of, uh, my appointees, Reverend Cleveland McFarland, uh, who's been a big part of the community, also an avid golfer, who also uses, uh, our golf course constantly. So I'm thankful that he has agreed to volunteer and be a part of the process. But I just want to add this one little statement, is that these boards of directors in the city are volunteer positions where members of the city give of their time and expertise. And, uh, as long as they are qualified and willing to give of themselves to support our community, I would suggest that we all support them as they go about doing the business of the city of Mobile.
Alright. In other discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Interposed? Motion to pass.
4999, declare the structure at 954 Marine Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to table.
Second. They're probably moving to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Motion to pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 081007 through 211019.
By council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Announcements, next week's council meeting will be held Wednesday, November 17th, 9:00 pre-meeting and 10:30 regular meeting.
Okay. Who's to start to my right, Mr. Jones?
Just two things real quick. Number one, we're gonna have a District 6 community meeting on the 18th of November, Connie Hudson Center at 6:30 PM. Public safety is gonna be the primary focus along, hopefully with the mayor's 100-day vision, if we can work out the agenda there and the timeline to make that work. Lastly, it's an exciting week in Mobile with Veterans Day on Thursday. I'll tell you, as I go around the city, it is incredible at the amount of veterans that we have that's woeing through the threat of everything that goes on in the city, from World War II veterans, Korean War veterans, Vietnam veterans, and on. We have the parade Thursday at 10:00 AM, I believe. Is that correct?
I think so.
Veterans Day Parade downtown?
It starts at 10:00.
I think that's right.
Okay. Would encourage you to come out for that event. Should be a great day to celebrate the veterans. Look forward to seeing y'all there. Thank you.
Mr. Kara?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, to reiterate, Pastor Marvin Lou from Stewart Memorial this Thursday, please, if you are vested in our city, in our community, especially in District 2, please come out and let's support this initiative. It is very important that we all be a part of the process of stopping the violence in our city. Also, on Friday afternoon at the Hope Center in Plateau, I will be hosting a community meeting to discuss the property at 1490 Telegraph Road and the rezoning issue or opportunity that's there, because we have no problems, just opportunities in our city of Mobile. Hopefully, everyone that is in the community that is interested in this will come out and also participate. We may briefly also take a look at the old Lad Supply property also on, I think that's Paper Mill Road at, I can't remember, I think it's Woodland or whatever that drive is, but we'll also come back and revisit it in its own separate community meeting. Also, to the administration, maybe the Public Safety Director, I've got a string of texts yesterday from the Tante Square members about State Street and ticketing of homeowners on Tex- I mean, on, I keep saying Texas Street, State Street. It appears that because it's a historic neighborhood and there's very little off-street parking, that the neighbors are parking on this, or the residents are parking on the street and now being ticketed. We might want to visit them in a community meeting and find some resolve, maybe a sticker or something on a window for those that actually live on the street that have no off-street parking, but we might want to address that. I'll follow that up today with a piece of correspondence to the administration asking for you guys to investigate and help resolve the issue. Mr. President, at this time, oh, one more. I need to commend Mobile Parks and Recreation. This Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend a free basketball clinic put on by Mobile Parks and Recreation, hosted by Bishop State and a Bishop State coaching staff and an AD that was there. It was an absolutely wonderful and great event. Most of you guys or most of the people in the city know that I'm also a basketball coach for Little League, CYO, and everywhere else. I found out that Texas Street Park does not have a girls' basketball team. So I'm gonna say this, if you are a girl in District 2 and want to play basketball and have a vested interest in learning the game, I will coach the team. Come sign up at Texas Street, sign up with Parks and Recreation. I know that they've already started, but I will volunteer my time and coach that team or if you are interested. I would love for Texas Street and the city to have additional girls' basketball teams in the city, and I'll be glad to coach one of those teams. I made that aware to the community this weekend. I'm gonna publicly announce it now. I'll be more than happy to do so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Daze?
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Every year at this time, I wear a paper poppy. When I was a child, the ladies used to sell these paper poppies on the street corners. They're remembrance of the individuals who have died in our wars. It's a, it's a, it started shortly after the First World War. It started in Britain, where the day is called Remembrance Day. Initially, in this country, it was called Armistice Day, to remember the armistice that was occurred on, at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. Sometime later, it was changed Veterans Day, but the poppy, the poppy is worn, as I said, as a remembrance. And why the poppy? Why is that, why was that flower selected? It was selected because after the war, there was an English gentleman called John McRae who wrote a poem in Flanders Fields. And I'm gonna read it to you, it's fairly short. "In Flanders Fields the poppies blow Between the crosses row on row That mark our place And in the sky the larks still bravely singing fly Scarcely heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago we lived Felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe To you from failing hands we throw the torch Be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep Though poppies grow in Flanders Fields." So this coming Thursday, November 11th, let's remember those who have fought and those who have fought and died to preserve our freedom. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Daze. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Coming up on December 7th, I have my annual Christmas and holiday meeting coming up. Hard to believe Christmas is already here, but I want you all to just go ahead and put that on your calendars. December 7th, 6 o'clock PM at the Mobile Museum of Art, and we will again be recognizing our homeowners' association, community action groups, and other community groups, as well as our public works and public safety employees, and bring in gifts for Wilmer Hall. And yes, we did just do this in July. It was Christmas in July because we were not able to do it last Christmas, so six months apart. But it will be a wonderful event and I just invite everyone to please come. We'll be sending out postcards to everyone in the community and we'll also, of course, do some alerts on Facebook and in my newsletter. I am also looking for an appointee for the Mobile City-County Youth Council. I have been looking for some, for someone to do this. We need a high school student, preferably junior, sophomore or junior, someone who will stay with the council for a while. So if you are interested, please contact me or my office. We'll also put this back out on my newsletter again to remind folks, but if you have a high school senior that would like to serve on the youth council, please let us know. We'll be happy to send some more information about exactly what they do and what they could expect to get in return, the benefits of being on this council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce Gemini Studios Empowerment Diabetes 5K Run Fun Walk will be this Saturday, November 13th at, I believe now the new name, Fred Richardson Tresatineal Park. So make sure you show up. It starts at 11 o'clock. It's not too late to register, so you can look it up, Gemini Studio Empowerment. Also, I want to encourage everyone to, or any young ladies, to sign up for Councilman Carroll, the girls' team, Kiwanis Boys and Girls Club, we have a team, so I look forward to playing you, Councilman Carroll.
Mr. Reynolds?
No announcements.
Mr. Daze?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce that there will be administrative, an administrative services committee meeting upstairs on the ninth floor in the conference room immediately following this meeting. That committee will occur in order to discuss a resolution and ordinance that are before the city council. The resolution would increase the salaries of the municipal judges and the ordinance would set out a process for appointing municipal judges. Thank you.
Yes, and greetings to District 3. Last week, I had stated that I was gonna give out some important information that's coming up with some activities. One or two things have not been confirmed, but on next week, I'll look into announcing those activities. Also, I would like to wish all the veterans a very happy Veterans Day to my colleagues, Councilman Daze, and also Councilman Joe Jones, and also Colonel Delap. Did I miss in, Mr. Snowden?
Snowden.
And, okay, Mr. Holt, you wear many hats, don't you, Mr. Holt? And, oh, okay, okay, we always leave Baptiste out. But thank you all so much for y'all's services. This country would not be what it is today if it wasn't for y'all sacrificing your time and everything. Again, thank you all so much. And again, to all the veterans throughout Mobile and in this county and this state and this world, thank you all so much. Anything from the administration? All hearts, minds clear? Properly moving to second, they will adjourn in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.